Okay, we'll bring the May 12th, 2025 City Council meeting to order. Please stand for the.
My pleasure, agents, to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Presentations for A dash one.
Mr. Mayor and council members, as indicated here, prior council had an interest in transitioning the EDA membership over to elected officials, similar to the way that we operate our HRA in the city here. And after reviewing the legality of doing so, the city attorney advised there would be, you know, there were certain things that needed to happen. The terms of the individuals needed to expire, and once they are expired, you can appoint, you can appoint council members to those seats if you so wish. We've had this before, the city council before. We've noticed it properly. And it, as you'll recall, it's because it's a change to a founding document like this, it required a longer notice period than the normal notice period. So, so we did notice for the proper amount of time. And staff recommends two possibilities, either continuing the past practice by renewing the incumbents to the open positions, or modifying the current membership of two council members and five members of the public by appointing council members to the vacant EDA authority seats. The net result will be modifying a seven-member authority to a five-member authority, once all the terms have expired and council members have been appointed. If approved, the current membership will consist of four council members, there's currently two on there now, and three members of the public until such time as the public members' terms expire, at which point, as indicated, the council members can be appointed to fill those vacancies. So you have before you the resolutions, founding documents, and you can review those if you'd like, and the decision is before you this evening.
Do we need to reopen the public hearing before we take any action?
Yes, you do need to reopen the public hearing, and see if there's anyone that wishes to speak, and then you may close the public hearing. But it's the mayor that has that authority.
Okay, at this time, we'll reopen the public hearing on the Resolution 2025 dash 20.
Thank you, good evening. Well, I guess.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you introduce yourselves?
Oh, sorry. My name is Karen Creppis. I live on Gopher Drive. So I have some questions and concerns on this. I admit, I've not really been following this council of the last year or so, but I have been looking at the last meeting notes. I came to the work meeting because I was really interested in what the discussion was going to be on the Business Advisory Council, because its role is so completely different from an EDA, in its capacity, its functions, and its costs. So I guess my first question is, I'm just trying to understand, is it the intention of this council with this resolution, that you are attempting to completely phase out public members from the EDA and have it be run solely by council members? And I don't know if you can answer that question in this public forum? And if that is the case, then I am concerned, because this is a function that does require a variety of opinions. Not that there's not a variety of opinions, sitting with the individuals in front of me here, but East Bethel is a community that has a lot of needs, and in terms of our businesses, there's so much discussion about growth, where it's going to be and whatnot, but there's a lot of things that an EDA council can do. And in reading the notes, I did see comment, and correct me, I might be wrong, but Ms. Urkel stated that she'd been on the EDA and felt like it didn't do anything. Well, I'm looking at all of you, wondering, what will you do different from the EDA council? So if it is to be that the EDA council will be abolished and there's no public members, I'm looking at this group in front of me, and I'm not so sure I have confidence in how you'll lead East Bethel forward in that, and that's why I was so concerned about the Business Advisory Council, because I was just Googling some information. I have a lot of questions and concerns on that, because it is such a completely different function. I'm not going to bother to read anything on it, but I just wanted to make that clear. And again, we keep hearing that the city, over and over, wants the residents to be involved. And the EDA is a good way to get residents involved, and nowhere in this discussion that I saw, has there been any communication with our businesses, the Chamber of Commerce? What kind of input do they have? What kind of feedback do they have? Are they part of this conversation? I don't know. So I just wanted to address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing session. Discussion for council.
Well, I'll just state that I'm still against not having resident members on the EDA. I believe it should stay as it is.
Any further discussions?
Matt, do we know why East Bethel originally had a five-member made up of the council when it started its EDA, correct? Because it was like in 2011 or something, and we switched to a seven-member, I believe I read, in 2018 or something like that?
Okay. It was before 2018.
Was it?
Yeah. I would venture, guess, to 2012, because I remember coming to EDA meetings before I was really involved, and there were resident members on the EDA.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, the bylaws on 2013 identify seven voting members in 2013, so at least.
Was 2013 that we switched to seven?
Could be, if I'm reading the bylaws correctly, if there weren't changes prior to that, May 20th, 2013.
It would have been, Mayor, council members, August 17th of 2011, to be exact.
Is that when we switched? Or is that when we had five?
That's when you switched to seven, I believe. Yeah, because the enabling resolution was adopted on July 16th of 2008. Enabling resolution formed the EDA, so the East Bethel EDA was formed after July 16th of 2008. It was a five-member board. It was then amended on August 17th of 2011.
And Mr. Mayor and council member Miller, you're asking why it was amended?
Yeah, why did we change?
Could be any number of reasons why. Sometimes having additional members is, is due to the fact that it's hard to get a quorum at times. Could be as simple as that. But it's tough to say without really scouring back through the meeting minutes in 2013 to see, you know, what the discussion was, if it was documented well.
My also understanding is that haven't the cities around us, at least that's what I've heard, switched back to council?
Mr. Mayor.
I heard Oak Grove did, and I heard Ham Lake also did.
Mr. Mayor and council, I have not researched that.
I'll make the motion to modify the current members of the EDA by appointing council members to the vacant EDA authority seats, resulting in modifying a seven-member authority to a five-member authority.
Second.
Mayor, council member, if I could suggest that you just actually move to approve Resolution 2025 dash 20, amending the enabling EDA resolution.
What was the number, 2025?
Dash 20.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash 20, enabling the EDA.
Second.
Well, motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion passes, three to two. Moving on to four, two, approve Resolution, Resolution 2025 dash 21. I guess at this time, we'll open the public hearing on that one.
This one actually does not require a public hearing.
Okay. So.
This is just basically filling two vacant spots.
So at this point, the mayor has to name the two council members?
Well, the mayor would appoint, but it's this council then that approves the appointment. So if the mayor would like to appoint, if the mayor wants to open up the discussion as to how he should appoint, that is also another way of doing so.
Well, I guess at this time, I just open up for discussion who wants to be in them two positions between the three that are left.
I guess I'd volunteer if no one's speaking up. I've had extensive experience being on the EDA. It's, I can jump right in on anything with it, it'll be fine.
I'd volunteer too.
Jim, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Sir, motion?
Mr. Mundell and Tim here, Mr. Miller, and.
You'll need a motion then?
We'll need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2025 dash 21, adding Mr. Mundell and Mr. Miller to the EDA, as EDA members.
Second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none heard, motion passes. Public forum. Tammy.
Mayor, council, Tammy Gimpel, Baton Street. Um, I'm not sure if I can talk about, I know you guys wanted it for the next meeting, and I know Sue wanted to hear the story. And trust me, I can't wait till I can tell the story, but the court date's not till the end of June, so I'm not sure how much I can even speak on that part of it.
I just want to make it clear that these are two separate matters, and they should be deemed as such. So the court criminal matter is totally different from this IUP, and the city is, can proceed forward, and then Ms. Gimpel has to decide how she's going to address that, and I cannot advise her on that, nor can this council.
Okay, I'm hearing that, but at the same time, it's being brought up about the Sheriff's Department and my IUP. So as much as they are absolutely separate, they're being pulled together, so.
They're different proceedings, but they, they're operating under the same circumstances.
Okay, well, to the council, I, I would respectfully ask that it get pushed till at least after my court date, so I can completely defend myself, because I'm not going to be able to do that with, you're not going to get all the facts if I can't do that, and you don't have all the facts.
I have no problem with that. I mean, we need facts to everything, especially when we're talking about IUP. It's important that we do have all the facts for it, so I have no problem with delaying it until after.
I agree. Can we move it to the first meeting in July?
Mr. Mayor and council, is that?
We need a motion for that.
Both?
As long as there's general consensus to that, there doesn't need to be a motion. It's just an instruction to staff.
So there's, there's two different IUPs we're talking about here. There's the animal containment contractual IUP, and then the horses IUP.
I'd just say both of them. Just give her the chance.
Right. I agree.
Well, in typical court procedures, we ain't really guaranteed that this would be end in June either.
True.
Right. So we could be going out on a big limb here.
Well, I think you're just doing this out of kind of a general respect, but at the same time, additionally, I can see where the patience of the council in wanting to come to a decision with respect to its own IUP might take precedent over how the criminal calendar works, and also who is causing the delay in that particular criminal action. So I, I hear what the mayor's saying.
Well, since the animal IUP is not reliant upon the court proceedings, we could handle that, just to get that one off the books, have that issue be done, and then pick up the other IUP as it comes, I guess.
So, Mr. Mayor and council member, if I'm understanding correctly, is it the consensus of the council to address the two-horse IUP on May, on the May 28th? And then the secondary IUP, the home occupation permit?
After the first court date, we'd revisit it.
After the first court date? And what if the court date, the first court date is postponed?
Then we'll deal with it, first meeting in July.
Yeah. Okay. First meeting in July. Does everyone, that's consensus?
I'm fine with that.
We're all good with that?
I'm good.
Yeah. Everybody's good with that, then we'll move forward with that, Dana. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sarah McLaughlin.
Happy Monday. Sarah McLaughlin, 231st Lane. I am back, just to discuss my neighbor. Again, I haven't seen any kind of changes. I know we have continued to say it's taken time. I know that the fire department stated that they were going to move forward with going in and checking on their ordinances, if it's safe to live, what is the dwelling look like. I have not seen any presence of the fire department. So at my third meeting now here, council members, I am asking you what you are doing to help this situation. I've pulled up many ordinances that I've found myself, that I feel, and you guys can, have not told me that none of these ordinances couldn't be enacted on these neighbors, but I'm just wondering why you're not doing anything. It looks like you were first alerted of multiple safety violations at the house February 16th of 2024, in incident case report from the deputies that had visited the place. So we are now coming on a year and three months, since you guys had first been alerted of any safety violations within that residence, and we do not have anything, not even a search of the property. It is my understanding that you, as city council members, can start an abatement process. You also can, um, hold on, I lost my place here. You can also enact a, like administrative warrant to search the property. But that has not been done. There is a trailer that's still there, that would give you full capability to go into that. It is legally parked there. It was parked there when the owner left. I'm, I can't say I'm 100% positive, but I'm pretty positive someone lives in it, because they often have a fire right outside the door, like they're camping. Now, I couldn't quickly, I have not been able to find any ordinances of anybody living in a mobile unit on a property in East Bethel, but I would assume that there is something somewhere. I, I don't want to be frustrated, I don't, but I am frustrated. I'm also frustrated because I feel that you, as council members, are pushing it off to other organizations to take care of the problem, when it's an East Bethel City problem right now. If any of these people were living next to you, I would imagine that it would be handled swiftly, and not a year and four months in, to when the first time that the Sheriff's Department informed you of these issues. So I have not had any updates. I've given my information to the fire department. I see the police officers in our neighborhood still, which is great. However, there is no action from you guys.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I would say that there is plenty of action that's going on right now, some of which is sensitive, and we're not going to disclose over the, over the TV land right now. So I would ask you to be patient, allow the process to play out, and, and that's all we can say at this point.
Mr., look, I feel like that's an out, and this is very unfair, that you guys have not given any results. And this is on you, as council members.
They have, they have arrested multiple people over there. They've issued citations. One of the challenges, Mr. Mayor and council members, is that the owner allowed access to two people on this property, who then allowed access to other people. And so the eviction process becomes very complicated at that point. And this individual was incarcerated, had to wait to get out of jail before they could try and deal with it, and they're walking through the process allowed by law. We are following law on this. We cannot, as council members, or administrator, or city staff, beat down the door and haul everyone away. Sorry, it cannot happen that way.
So are you saying you cannot enact the Blight Division Three, Section 26 through 62 policy that cleans up? Are you saying that you are not able to enact any of these things that are in your guys' council, whatever they're called? I don't even.
Codes.
Yeah. Like, are you saying that you can't do this? Because this clearly states you can.
Codes, codes can be enacted, but it ain't going to be the next day process. It's, it's strung out.
Yep, I understand, but have you even went through the process of filing for a warrant, an administrative warrant to get on the property?
I think in the future here, short future, you'll be happy.
I sure hope so, because this is not even just a reflection on our neighborhood, but it's also a reflection on this council. And it's just unfortunate, because there are a lot of things that a layman person, such as myself, is reading in your ordinances that are not being acted on. And if it is a rental property, where's the rental license? Where was the inspection?
I never said rental license, or rental property.
Okay, well, if they're a renter, then that's what gives them rights to be there.
I never said rental, and it is not a rental.
Well.
Say, Sarah, upon leaving tonight, could you grab my card? I would like to talk to you more about this, but I'm not going to talk like this in front tonight. But if you could, I'd really like to help you.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen, did you have anything else on public forum?
No.
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion?
I'll second, and I'd like to pull item G, please.
G as in goat?
Yes.
Anything else need to be pulled?
Mayor, council members, I noticed that there were some errors in B, D, and E. So they're really quick, but I, if you could pull them so that I could know where they are. It's B, minutes, April 24th, 2025 town meeting. Minutes, April 28th, 2025 city council. Oh, I'm sorry, that, that, C, April 28th, that does need to be pulled. It's the April 28th, 2025 city council meeting, April 28th, 2025 LBAE meeting. Basically, they have me attending, and I didn't attend those, so. So I, I need to make it very clear. I didn't attend, in one case, it was attorney Saufley who attended, and I want to make that clear for the record as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of what we have left?
Aye.
Aye.
Those posed, none heard, so go to B, I guess, first.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is the draft minutes for the East Bethel Town Hall meeting of April 24th, 2025. It has Eric Larson, city attorney, present at that town hall meeting. I was not present at that town hall meeting. As a result, I didn't review the rest of the minutes as well, so I would ask that that be struck, that I was, that I attended the town hall meeting. Otherwise, I have no other changes to that, to those minutes.
Make a motion to approve item B, striking the city attorney from attendance.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none heard. Item C.
This is the draft minutes for the East Bethel City Council meeting of April 28th, 2025. It has Eric Larson, city attorney, and then friends Christina Benson, close friends, present. Last minute, I was not able to attend, and Jacob Saufley, that's S-A-U-F-L-E-Y, attended, as my substitute, so issue revised at B. Jacob Saufley was the city attorney in attendance, and friends Christina Benson should also be deleted. No other changes.
Make motion to approve item C, the changes recommended by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? None being heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none heard. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the draft minutes for the Local Board of Appeals and Equalization of April 28th, 2025. At 5:30 PM, city attorney rarely attends the Local Board of Appeals and Equalization. I certainly was not here in East Bethel on April 28th, and I verified that Mr. Saufley also did not attend the Local Board of Appeals and Equalization. Therefore, ask that Eric Larson, comma, city attorney, be stricken as one of the individuals present. No other changes.
Make motion to approve item E, with the recommendation of the city attorney.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? None being heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, none heard. Item G.
Item G is the completion of probationary period of our building permit technician, Misty, I can't pronounce her last name. I want to welcome her, but I also wanted to ask if performance reviews are being done, and it's being checked off, that she completed all the standards that were, are we. and it's being checked off that she completed all the standards that were required, and then it goes to all employees, our performance review is being done on everybody now because they hadn't been in the past, and that's a concern of mine.
Mr. Mayor and council members, concerning Misty, she has not had a performance review, although we monitor her performance on a daily basis. She's been doing a tremendous job of coming up to speed and helping people at the window and processing through the permits. So, I have not had any issues at all with the work she's been doing. As far as the other staff's performance reviews, it's something I'm looking into because you're right, it has not been done in the past. So, currently, we have not done performance reviews yet.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will make a motion to approve item G of the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any posed, none heard. Motion passes. Item eight A one.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members, Grace was going to be here this evening to present, and she is not feeling well, so I said I would cover this for her. Essentially, what you have before you is a resolution opting into Anoka County's Urban County Program Cooperative Agreement, and this is as it relates to community development block grants and home investment partnership program funding. Essentially, the federal government provides X amount of funding, it's different every year, for, for the years or whatever that it covers. And, and this is CDBG funding, and I'll just give you kind of a little example. There's different categories for this funding, but this is funding we can apply for in these categories. There's property development. This can be used for neighborhood revitalization, removing, removal of urban blight, including acquisition, sale, and demolition. It can also be used for historic preservation efforts. The next category is housing activities. Housing activities can, if successful in applying for those dollars, can be used to rehabilitate homes and rental properties. For example, lead paint abatement, asbestos remediation are examples of projects that you can use those dollars for. They offer, also offer home ownership assistance programs and relocation assistance. And then, the third category is public facilities and services. Public facilities are community centers, special needs facilities, or, for example, improving accessibility for physically disabled community residents. And in addition, public services are categories of those are job training programs, employee, employment services, substance abuse treatment programs, child care services, crime prevention, and other services that are eligible for those funds. And typically, what happens is the cities will apply for, in one of these categories or all three of the categories, projects that they have, and then they're scored, and the county gets to decide how those dollars are going to be distributed on an annual basis. So, this is just, again, just an agreement where we opt into it. I'm not sure historically if we've ever received dollars from this before, but say, for example, the senior center wants a van to go out and pick up people. I've seen those type of applications come through when I was on the county board. So, there's no cost to the city for this, but it essentially is just opting into this cooperative agreement, and, and if projects are applicable in the future, we can apply for them and benefit the community.
So, I have a question. Usually, when you opt into something, it, there's hidden requirements or rules, you know, well, if you're opting in, you opted in, so now you have to do this. You opted in, so now you have to accept whatever that the city of East Bethel might not want to accept in our city, because we have some standards here. Standards that are not being met, and we don't want to get more of those kinds of standards in our community. So, I want to, before I accept anything, because we're not urban, and when I saw the word urban, I'm like, uh-uh, uh-uh, not, nothing urban coming here as far as I can as where my vote's going to be. So, how can we guarantee that there's no fine print? Let's put it that way.
Mr. Mayor and council members, there is fine print if you accept dollars. If you accept dollars, you have to go through reporting, exactly what the federal government requires, and, but if you don't accept funding, if you don't apply, you don't have any of that red tape that you have to follow through on. So, at the point in which we have a project that might qualify for these dollars, we can certainly speak with the county and determine what sort of hoops would we have to jump through, being that we're a small community, small staff, to be able to meet the requirements of the federal government at that point. So, that's, that's an option for you. Just because you opt in doesn't commit you to anything.
That's good to know. So, hypothetical situation, we, we apply to get a van to bring people to town halls and stuff like that. Is there any chance there would be a fine print that would be totally unrelated, or the van is the van is the van? Would they say, oh, you have to go to Minneapolis and bring people out here, or, you know, something off the wall?
No, Mr. Mayor and council members, I've never seen anything like that in any of these applications. Most of it has to do with reporting. The federal government wants to ensure that if you, in this hypothetical situation, where you use the funds to buy a van, that you in fact bought a van, and that the van isn't being used for a, you know, party van, it's actually being used for the express purpose that you indicated on your application.
Okay, well, I like the idea of trying to apply for grants. I think grants and other programs that are funded, but you're saying, you keep saying federal, not as this is coming from state, this is totally federal? Is that what you're saying?
CDBG are federal dollars, yep. It's all tax dollars.
I trust the federal better than I do the state right now.
Mayor, council members, I'm very familiar with the CDBG and the home programs. I've been involved and developed for thirty years, and I've seen these particular monies used in various forms and so forth, and the city administrators correct. Council member, your, your question, I think, is right on target and very apt. When and if the city should see an opportunity through Anoka County to maybe secure these funds and make an application, that's one thing. But then, even once you've been awarded, you can always say, you know what, maybe we don't want these requirements, but at least then you'll know what those requirements are for that particular use and make that really kind of informed decision, does it really match? And a lot of times, what you can also do is then flow those requirements down to maybe others, because sometimes you're using them to facilitate, you know, residents or developers, and you can flow it down to them. So, I, I agree, for what it's worth, I think it makes sense to opt in because you are not obligating yourself at this time, you're just giving yourself an opportunity.
Thank you. That brought me up another question. So, we opt in, and can the city just do a grant, or will the city that grant request have to go through council for approval? Or will you be, will the city be able to just start requesting grants, you know? And, I mean, I wanted to make sure that there's, it's just not city staff being able to apply for grants without council knowing about it, and then committing us to something that we didn't want to be committed to.
Ultimately, we'd have to approve the grant.
Correct.
That the staff could not commit us to something that we do not approve.
That is correct. Matter of fact, actually, I have not seen any of these programs where actually you have to provide a city council resolution before they'll even award. I, I don't know a hundred percent, but I can, off my recollection, every single one of these, they require a city council resolution. Plus, you're statutory city, so you would need to do that anyway. Staff does not have authority to bind themselves to a federal grant agreement.
Thanks. All right. Well, with that.
Very good questions, though.
Anybody else have any questions? Just me, huh? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve resolution, Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six, opting into Anoka County's Urban County Program.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? None being heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none heard, motion passes. Item eight E, public works.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have two capital improvement plans to present to you tonight. Item eight point one, or eight point O E one is the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty Parks Capital Improvement Plan. The Parks Commission prepares an annual capital improvement plan, which updates needs and costs of proposed projects, evaluates priorities, and establishes funding for these works for the coming year and for each of the subsequent years for a five-year period. This plan is presented to city council for their approval and used in the preparation of the twenty-twenty-six budget. Attached is the twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty Parks Capital Improvement Plan developed from discussions at the March eleventh and the April eighth Park Commission meetings. Approval of the plan only commits the city for projects identified in twenty-twenty-six. Projects beyond twenty-twenty-six are for planning purposes and will be reevaluated annually for funding prioritization during the capital improvement needs assessment and planning process. The budget includes a general fund transfer of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Parks Capital Improvement Projects for twenty-twenty-six, and it is a ten thousand dollar increase over the twenty-twenty-five budget to adjust for inflation and is subject to city council approval. It is anticipated that the Parks dedication fees from developers will provide an additional three hundred and three thousand dollars to the Parks Acquisition and Development Fund for twenty-twenty-six, mainly from the Vikings, Viking Meadows Development. And the Park Commission voted unanimously to recommend this plan to the city council for their approval. I'll run through the projects real quick, and then we can entertain a motion and take any comments or questions at that time, if that works. So, attachment one, the first page is the Parks Acquisition and Development Fund. For twenty-twenty-six, we have two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the Viking Meadows Development. They have a total of three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that they've dedicated to the city. We're going to be getting that money in phases, so the next two years for twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven, that'll kind of be going towards developing that park and that, and that development. I should also say, too, the Park Acquisition Development Fund is funded solely from park dedication fees. There's no general fund transfer money in this, in this budget itself, and this money has to be used for park projects. We have a, kind of a longstanding item in twenty-twenty-eight, looking at ball field lights for Booster West, but the price tag is rather high, so that's going to depend on development and needs, but that's kind of a placeholder in there for twenty-twenty-eight. That's kind of needed for the town hall team would like those, and some of the older youth need to play longer games that go into the evening, and they need lights for those games, so. For twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, we don't have anything planned yet. It's kind of, kind of a long ways out to see where we're at, but we'll, you know, adjust that from year to year. On the next page is the Park Capital Fund. This is the fund that's funded from the general fund transfer, and as I noted, it's a ten thousand dollar increase from last year, and it includes a ten thousand dollar increase going forward, and it's a continuation of what was approved last year. It was a kind of a ten thousand dollar increase to keep up with inflation. For twenty-twenty-six, they want to put a zip line in Booster West. This would be adjacent to the existing playground structure. It's been requested by a lot of youth, kids and stuff, and some other cities have them, and they're huge, they're like one of the biggest draws for the parks. The other thing we get a lot of requests for are pickleball courts. Our tennis courts are in rough shape. The last time we had them resurfaced, the company basically told us that they're not going to come back and do it again because they're beyond repair, they need to be redone, so. We've got four planned for, or a couple planned for Booster West, and probably have to tear out their tennis court at some point, too. And then, just some small items, we had a youth come in, I think they contacted the mayor about some volleyball courts out in Booster Park. They added that to the plan after the last meeting. And then, moving forward, we have some placeholders there, more pickleball courts, and some of these are in outside parks, some of our neighborhood parks we've had requests for. And kind of, that's kind of the big items. We got a couple parking lot repairs for Booster East and Booster West in twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-twenty-nine, or twenty-thirty, and then they want to do a big development in Bondi Park, which is a large open area park that we have that doesn't have a lot of use right now, it's kind of underutilized, so. And that pretty much sums up the, the two plans. I guess we'll entertain a motion at this time and take any comments or questions.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty Parks.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions?
I'm just curious, Nate, that zip line you're talking about, is that a big liability to the city? Do we have to get insurance?
No, they're, we're covered with our insurance. It's, it's only a couple feet off the ground, and just a, all covered with wood chips. We have a couple fixed rail ones that we put in Mayor Peterson Park last summer, and the kids love it, the neighborhood loves it, so. This one's a little bit longer, it's on a cable. Ramsey, Blaine, a bunch of cities have them in place already, and they're, they're a big draw.
So, they're at like a six-foot height or something?
It's got a little bit.
The handle is?
It's not even really that, I don't think it's that high off the ground. It's, it has a rope that you kind of sit on, it's got a little bit of a ramp, and you kind of build it on a little bit of a slope, just enough that you can get down to the other side. If you ever get a chance, you want to take a look at one, the big park on Lexington and Blaine with the red barn, they have one there that, it's usually a line of kids getting ready to get on that thing, so.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any others? Motion and a second on the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty Parks Capital Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, none heard, motion passes. We have a motion on the roads capital. I think he hasn't did that yet.
Item eight point O E two, this is the roads capital improvement plan. It's kind of the same setup here, where we're only approving plant, projects for twenty-twenty-six. I should say, too, all these projects will come before the council, again, when they actually come up for the project to be completed, so you'll have another chance to vote yes or no on it. I've attached the roads capital improvement plan and a project location map. The first page is the municipal state aid fund. This is the money that we get from the state. It's, it's money that we receive back, that we've paid in for all of our gas tax and things like that, road taxes, the city's portion. In twenty-twenty-five, we received seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars, and that money can only be used for state aid roads, so these are major connector roads. I think a lot of people are familiar with which, which roads these are. We're starting off twenty-twenty-six with a three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar deficit because of some past projects we advanced funded. We can advance fund up to three years, so a lot of times we run this negative to pay for projects when we need them, and they're a lot cheaper to get them done right away, because every year we wait, everything seems to go up in price. For twenty-twenty's, the only project we have in twenty-twenty-six is we're committed to a turn lane on Viking Boulevard at Sand Hill Parkway. We're going to leave that in there for budgeting purposes. We've kind of been working with the county, looking at different ideas on whether or not that project has to be taken, taken on, or if there's a different improvement for Viking, but for right now, that's our budgeted amount, and that brings that balance pretty much down to zero. Twenty-twenty-seven, we're looking at doing a mill and overlay of Polk Jackson. This is the road that goes by the elementary schools, and then the Klondike portion of that that goes up to Highway sixty-five, new pavement in those areas. In twenty-twenty-eight, Briarwood Avenue, same thing there, just an overlay, mill and overlay. And then, in twenty-nine and twenty-thirty, we don't have anything planned, we kind of build that balance back up. We can start looking at, there's, I know there's some talk of service roads, developer-driven projects, or we could always try and save up some money to do gravel Klondike Drive with some of this money, too, so. On the next page is the street capital fund. This is funded from the general fund. We do receive an additional two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars from the state of Minnesota. That's, in a way, earmarked for this portion. So, in reality, the only general fund money that's coming from the taxpayers for East Bethel is right around four hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-six. For twenty-twenty-six, we're looking at doing Cedar Brook Neighborhood, which is, if you look on the last page, it's the item in blue in kind of the southwest corner of the state, or, excuse me, in the city. One neighborhood there, and then Sunset Drive is a project that we're doing with, in conjunction with Linwood. We've each set aside three hundred thousand dollars for that project. Linwood is on pace for that project, too, so we'd like to keep that in that location on our plan. that location on our plan. 2027, a couple more neighborhoods, London, 225th, Pine Crest Estates, 224th and 225th. These are the neighborhoods kind of right behind City Hall here, they're in yellow on the map. In, uh, 2028, Quincy, Carlisle, and Rain Tree additions, they're in magenta on our map. Um, all these projects in reality could be done right now. Uh, we're, we're asking for a $50,000 increase each year to help build this up a little bit, we've kind of gotten behind on some of this. So for 2026, we're asking for 650, 2027, we're asking for 700, 2028, 750, and so on down the line. And then a couple more in 29 and 2030 are developments that are in need of overlays as well, so that pretty much runs through our five-year project list.
So we're just improving 2026, though, right?
For the budgeting, planning purposes, for levy and everything like that, correct, yep. And then the project will come back to the council when it's time to bid and we get, get the amount and stuff, too, so.
So we'll need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the 2026 to 2030 Roads Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have a question. Um, you mentioned the Viking and Sand Hill Turn Lane?
Mm-hmm.
Is the turn lane on Sand Hill that they're going to install or on Viking? Because if it's on Viking, doesn't the county have to pay for that?
It was part of the agreement, uh, when, when a city puts in a road, they have to build the turn lanes, the county requires that. So they wanted us to do it right away when they built Sand Hill Parkway in, but we were able to push it off five years because of, uh, the cost was so high and there wasn't a lot of traffic at the time. But we have to build a left turn lane if you're heading west on Viking, a left turn lane to turn onto Sand Hill Parkway. It's expensive because it's all concrete in there, and it's gonna require moving another whole lane over, and it's getting really close to those houses there, too. We've done some of the right-of-way acquisition already, um, Craig, our engineer's done some of the design work for it. So, yeah, we are required as part of that agreement at the time when that went in.
I tell you, this city makes agreements that don't help this city.
And I think this one was the county that, uh, it was their requirement, we would've preferred not to pull that in.
I get it, I get it, but, that's all I got.
Any more discussion? None being heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Motion passes.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Eight G.
Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, before you here today, an approval for those that plan on attending the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, gonna be held in Duluth this year, uh, June twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, and, uh, conference includes general sessions, innovative workshops, networking opportunities, and one-on-one conversations with vendors, um, that prove to be beneficial, uh, for those that'll be attending. You'll see some of the cost on there, if you're, if you've attended before, it's $425, if you are a first-time attendee, it's $275. Hotel rooms are a hundred and forty-nine a night with the conference rate, and there's some estimates in there for meals and mileage and that sort of thing. So I wanted to bring this before the council, uh, to review the attachments that were on here, and so far we have, um, Councilmember Urkel, Councilmember Mundell, Councilmember Smith, that are planning to attend, and myself.
You're not going?
No, I'll be out of town that weekend.
Yeah, I'll put the conference.
Yeah. So we need a motion first?
Uh, since you're not going, why don't you make the motion already?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Motion passes.
That's what I get on the screen on the last page.
Uh, staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items to talk about here, um, wanted to draw attention to the striped parking lots out there, I know that, um, uh, Nate did mention that, but we got a really good deal on, uh, parking lot striping, so, again, it's kind of a, a necessary thing, uh, as we kind of beat it up through the winter and that, but it's, uh, it kind of brings everything up to current standards and makes it look nice, so, you'll notice that's out there. Um, we have, I have tomorrow a meeting with the, uh, union to, to discuss, uh, the information that we talked about at the finance committee, and my hope is that on May twenty-eighth, the next council meeting, that we'll be able to bring, um, uh, the proposal forward for adoption on the council. And then I just wanted also, uh, touch base, uh, the last council member, we had an individual come concerning roosters. Um, they had been in here a couple times, that, you know, concerned over their neighbor and, and some of those, uh, some of the issues that they're dealing with. We've gone out there twice and we have yet to hear a rooster. Um, so it's very difficult to enforce any sort of code enforcement if, especially if, if it relates to nuisance when you can't actually identify it. So I'm not sure, um, if some roosters lost their lives or if the, I'm not sure what happened there, so.
After the last, um, time he came through, I did go out there one evening myself and sat at two different places for about fifteen, twenty minutes each, and I could hear roosters. Um, wasn't very loud, but I suspect that's because I was sitting on roadway and not in somebody's backyard, and if the roosters are being kept in the backyard, it doesn't travel, but I did hear them, they do exist, exist out there. Uh, as to how much of a nuisance they are, that, uh, is a personal thing, I guess.
Yeah, we've had three visits in total out there and have yet to hear one, so you got lucky hearing them, I guess.
But they're only allowed one, right? Is that correct?
The code, I believe, allows one per acreage, per, uh, limited, um, you know, I have a restriction on the amount of acreage you can have a rooster on. Um, the challenge with that, of course, is that you can have ten acres, and if the rooster is, if you're on the property line, the rooster's outside your window. It doesn't matter how many acres you have, you know, so this is somewhat the challenge that, you know, I think every municipality in Minnesota's dealt with when it comes to chickens, uh, this concept of roosters, and, um, and East Bethel would not be the first to struggle with it, so. But aside from that, that's all I have unless there's further questions.
Any questions from that? None heard, uh, let's move on to council reports.
Yeah, I got, uh, one here, first I wanna thank the council for approving their new fire chief on a successful background and a reference check. And myself and the mayor attended a meeting that they had, like, meet the chief, and, uh, I feel it went very well. He's a younger guy and he's, he just seems like he's wide open to all the rest of firefighters, which is great. He's willing to learn, is what he told us, too, 'cause he doesn't know at all on how our station operates or whatever, and I believe that it's a very good positive that he will be for the city of East Bethel, for our residents and for the firefighters, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Nate? Nate, are we still on tomorrow for the tours of all the parks?
Six o'clock, yep.
That's what the Parks Commission will be doing tomorrow, they'll be touring all the parks.
Wednesday, we have a Booster Day meeting, uh, six-thirty, right here. If anybody would like to come and attend, watch, uh, we are looking for volunteers to volunteer for on the day of Booster Day, could be just an hour or as much time as you want to volunteer for. Uh, if you are interested in volunteering, you can go to the Booster Day website, and they have a submission form there where you can submit your information. That's all I have.
Okay, um, I attended a city officials meet, quarterly meeting, it was a interesting meeting, they had DOT there and they talked about sixty-five and a lot of what's going on there. Um, I strongly recommend public officials go and meet, uh, other public officials from other towns and hear what's going on through the Anoka County, they, the county commissioners put it on, it's, uh, very informative. Um, I, today I had a airport planning meeting and, um, there, the next meeting is June eleventh, and it is open to the public for people who want to attend, it's online for people who want to attend, you can go to the Anoka County Blaine Airport and, uh, or Mac, I can't think of the word, macnomes.com, and, um, link into it. Um, but we worked on the agenda for the next meeting mostly and who the speakers are going to be, and, um, one of the things that's really exciting coming to Anoka is electric aircraft, so, and we'll be the first in, it's gonna go to the Anoki, the Anoka Blaine Airport, and we'll be the first and only one in the state. And June twenty-eighth, you know they have this EEA program down there where young kids can, uh, explore flying and flying careers and any career outside of the airport, you can have a career in there. Well, on June twenty-eighth, they're having a pancake breakfast, and, um, the, the EEA is putting it on, and, um, I strongly recommend, especially homeschoolers, to take your kids down there. And, um, that's, uh, for that one. The seniors, uh, meet every third Thursday, and we are still looking for the city to bring forth a, a modified ordinance allowing alcohol over there. Um, I know we have an ordinance that says no alcohol on any city property, however, the other two community centers are city property and do serve alcohol, so, uh, we are taking charge of the, all the legal stuff, we just need the city council to approve it and, which would mean an ordinance change, so, and that's all I have.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Meeting's closed.